To now call the Powhatan County Board Supervisors Workshop to order. Mr. Smith, if you could let people know how they can attend remotely?
Thank you, Madam Chair. During the public comment period, if you wish to speak from home, you can raise your hand, or if you're calling in, simply press star and then you'll be called.
Perfect. If you can please rise, Mr. Berry, if you can lead us in the pledge, and Mr. Williams, if you can lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair McCallum, thank you for another wonderful day in Powhatan County and all the many blessings we enjoy. Amen.
All right. Any requests to postpone or amend today's agenda? Have we approved the agenda as presented? All right. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We'll now move on to our first public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and address before the record.
Lynn Roberts, 3302, Harris Road. I've been obligated to say something, so I appreciate it again, you all. I wasn't here last week, but I got to report to you a couple of things. Very impressed with the job you all are doing. Thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. Anyone on Zoom?
Zoom is clear, Madam Chair.
All right. Seeing no one else, we will close our public comment period. Continuing out with our workshop discussion, we will begin with Chapter 9, Transportation. Staff looking at it definitely did a number on it in a positive way. It whittled away a lot of those projects and added the major intersections that we discussed. You guys have any?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Page 4. Powhatan County does not maintain roadways. That paragraph, second paragraph includes some missed applications to VDOT, which is a regional transportation planning organization. I think I mentioned previously, we need to include the Commonwealth Transportation Board, Smart Scale, plus the Central Virginia Transportation Authority. See Brett shaking his head, so he's got it.
That position. Anything else on 4?
Yes, ma'am. On the left-hand column, improving connectivity between Route 60 and 711. There's a need to consider and plan for opportunities for minor connectors between Route 60 and 711. Why do we want more of those?
We talked about this last minute. We were going to take that out for...
Yeah, we took it out in another section, I believe. That's just going to increase the problem for 711. And when we look at a map, you won't find it.
All right.
So that, I would tell you, that...
Take that section out?
Yep. Everything else is on the main page.
All right. Page 5.
Look at TR-1. It says, "Maintain the long-term safety and capacity of the county's major road corridors to preserve residents' quality of life and enhance economic well-being." I would add a TR-1C, a third strategy, and that is to preserve the current level of service on the county's roads. Now, we do that in a variety of different ways. One, we listened to Ms. Worley talk about intersections and how that would actually increase, okay, the level of service, and we do it by making sure that economic development doesn't degrade it. But we're really concerned about the long-term safety capacity, that we need to maintain the level of service that we have.
I would, Madam Charlotte, I'm like a front member, because if we go from level of service A to B, is that bad? So when you say maintain current level of service, I would say acceptable level of service, and then define that as C and above.
That's fine.
Real quick on that, what would you say if you have an intersection operating at a current level of service D, and it says preserve current level? Rephrase that. So say if it's currently at a level of service D.
Then we wouldn't want it lower, too.
We wouldn't want it lower, but it would maintain it. Okay. Yeah. Because some of them are going to be...
Right. The purpose is to keep it from...
Dipping lower.
It's where you say maintain acceptable level of service, i.e. C and above. So if you had D and somebody wants to come in and lower it down to E, of course, that's not going to be acceptable.
I think we have in here someplace else that acceptable is A through D, if I'm not mistaken.
We'll get to it, the actual categories, if you may. Look at TR-2, Objective TR-2. This is a question. Foster development of an interconnected road network. What does that mean?
I think when I read that, I think interconnected between, like, developments, which is what I think. For instance, like the Food Lion and the Maxi Center, that would be good if it was interconnected.
I don't think, I don't think we would all, I'm confused by that. Okay, I could come up with a couple of things. I'd like a better, either an explanation, okay, or a more precise way of what we're really getting at there.
TR-D2 gets to what Ms. Carmack said, but TR-2, if you then look at TR-2A, TR-2B, that's a little different than the overage of TR-2. So we probably need to make TR-2 somehow more general. That's a little specific. I have to think of how to capture all of those deficits under that. It's a little specific right now.
Okay. Clarify that, review that. The one other minor thing on page 5 up at the top right under Recommendations, it's actually 7 now, because we scrapped TR-3, so if you could say 7 transportation objectives. And then all the numbers will shift.
Are we keeping Objective TR-2? I think we should.
Yes. With clearer, more clarity. Okay.
Yeah, but just a question.
Clarification.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else on 5 or 6?
Yes, ma'am. I'm working to get my numbers. Okay. On, okay. So on page 6, under TR-5, about complete street designs, we strategically located mixed-use districts. We have 3. Is that it? So that's, those are the only 3 that we're talking about, complete street design.
So to say we're appropriate, add that.
Okay. TR-5D, create multimodal connections, transit bicycle production, and strategic transportation hubs throughout the county. We're not going to be putting in bicycle hubs at strategic intersections on 60.
So take out all...
Well, it's just, that's, that's not what we're going to do, okay? I think that's much broader than what we're going to do. I don't think, unless I missed something, the intermodal pieces, okay, with bicycles and walking, is not going to be anything to do with any of the intersections on Route 60.
You could say again, they're where appropriate.
That would be fine.
You know, instead of throughout, you know, where appropriate.
Yep. Major thoroughfare plan has several objectives, including, the third one, preserving the county's quality of life and rural heritage while reducing impacts on the environment, historic sites, parks, neighborhoods, and other valuable assets. How does that do that? I mean, that's a good thing to say, but how does, how does our major thoroughfare plan actually do that?
Possibly with a decent thoroughfare plan, you would have easier access to these historical sites, parks, without congestion.
It says preserving the county's quality of life and rural heritage while reducing the impacts on, I just, that just struck me as not being something that the thoroughfare plan actually does. It's a good thing, but one of the things that we've done consistently going through here is taking out the kind of, these are, these are things we kind of wish and want, okay, and that sound good, and trying to think that we're actually doing. So that was a question mark to all ago. If you feel that it really does that, then we'll leave it in. I just, it struck me as not being...
Do you want to keep it? Take it out?
Isn't that kind of like what they did at, like at the entrance? I would kind of envision it as the 522 entrance to the state park. Isn't that, wouldn't that kind of fall into that same description? And that's kind of the way I looked at that.
So if you're comfortable with leaving it, I just, that's a good example. It had to let me go. I couldn't come up with anything.
That was just the one that popped into my mind.
Over, now we're still on 7, and Route 60. Start talking about future roadway improvements, okay? And the major thoroughfare plans. There are also other things going on. Aren't we missing some stuff that, same kinds of things that David was talking about a minute? We have so much more going on there, in terms of Smart Scale, regional planning. So it's a little bit broader, I think, than what is there. It simply needs to be updated for other things that are feeding into our transportation system.
You prefer, maybe we make it more general, that there's plans out, things, plans, various things out there, and as we get new ones that change, this doesn't become outdated, or we're more exhausted, kind of list them all, potentially if new ones that change, we may find this gets outdated, we add a new plan for, you know, whatever route next year.
Which is broader than just this thoroughfare plan now. We've got a lot, we have many more tools around this with writ. At the bottom of page 7 on the Route 711, this goes back, okay, will require improvement, secondary, potentially construction of a limited number of new connectors, starting with AN potentially, goes out, that's what we were talking about a minute ago. Funding for new projects, okay? The plan assumes that most new road, proposed roadways, by and large, will be developer-driven. We only have 2 that are still dotted line, okay? And one of them, I'm not so sure is, I don't, I'm not so sure either one of them will continue.
I would keep that in there, though. I think that's a good...
But we don't have any proposed new roadworks. We've only got 2 new roadways that are proposed in there, okay?
Could we adjust that to say proposed new intersection improvements/roadways? I just think it...
No, 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 no. I know what you're talking about, just, okay.
Yeah.
Where are you going? Funding on page 8, funding up here. This talks about new roadways. We've only got 2 new roadways, 15 and 16 left in there. When we talk about those, I have the question of whether they should stay, stay there or not. And so it becomes almost moot if you're just talking about roadways now. Ms. Carmack, you talked about expanding it to intersections, then it becomes real again.
Right. And road improvements. Why don't we say roadway improvements? And then, that makes a little more...
Right, and take out the...
The dash.
Dash line.
Can take that out, it doesn't matter.
Down at the bottom of that page, under measuring capacity and impacts to local, the very last sentence, says transportation improvement should be identified and constructed by the developer to help minimize negative, no, to prevent negative impacts, not to minimize, to prevent negative impacts on local roads. So I would take out help minimize and put in prevent.
Do you think that's realistic?
I think, yeah.
Because it, no, you know, no matter what, say you have a development coming, and they're always going to have impacts.
Well, we talked about not allowing to downgrade our level of service.
Yeah.
Okay, and this dovetails with it. It's not what we want. Now, understanding that we're reading this more carefully than anybody else, what, I want a stronger word, what are the rest of y'all doing?
What do you guys think about that?
I think if you do anything that's going to be economically advancing the ball in Powhatan County on Route 60, you're going to create some more traffic flow. Anything you do. So if you create more traffic flow, it's highly unlikely that you're going to prevent negative impacts.
Traffic flow.
You can put, I'm sorry, the, you can sort of read into whatever, all these, they all have to do traffic impact analysis to show us what they, what it does in different levels of service, but when you look at all of the intersections, it's kind of interesting to me, the intersections, we talk about them when we talk about developments, they're all level of service F. Yeah. Do you get worse, do you get better? Anything you do creates more traffic flow. Anything that happens. Dunkin' Donuts creates more traffic flow, you know, in an intersection. That's the only thing that I would say, using the word prevent versus minimize. Get it back to what you guys were talking about earlier, your level of service, and you're going to preserve it to keep it to where it doesn't deteriorate or go get any worse. I think those are hard things to do. I do agree that developers should pay, or anything like that, to keep our level of services as best we can in it. But to prevent it, I mean, that's a nice thing to fall back on, to say, you know, you're not preventing our level of service or negative impact, so we're going to deny your, your planning.
What about...
I like, with the complaint, I like the more general terms, as opposed to, let's be, you know, kind of like Mr. Anderson was talking last week, the, this is supposed to be a guide. That's, that's where I'm at with most of it. It's a guide. If I look at the statute, the comprehensive plan shall be general in nature, and we're not, I, me personally, I don't think we're making it very general. I think we're making it very specific, which is my opinion. But anyways, that's all I want to say.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I agree with Mr. Bailey about general direction, but it is about the direction we're going in, okay? Whether it's to minimize or prevent. So that is a general, okay? So it's a much harsher word. I only accept that. But the fact that we're going to have more traffic on Route 60 does not mean that we're going to have increasing problems. We, in fact, have stripped out, I mean, all of the projections on Route 60 that have been made, were made with prior complaint. That comprehensive plan had a tremendous number of residential units stacked into it. We have stripped those out. So all of the assumptions that have been made about Route 60 with the traffic studies in the future, which were based on our comprehensive plan, are way overstated, because we're not planning for the level of development, for car development that we were in the past. So we have, we have plenty of room on 60 that we didn't have before we started this process. Now, having said all of that, Mr. Bailey feels like that's, you know, he'd rather have minimum, that's fine with him.
I'd probably prefer minimize.
Okay, well, this is, let's move on.
All right. Page 9. Is that it for each?
Bicycling for both commuting and recreational purposes. We're not commuting with bicycles in Powhatan County. We're not.
I'm sorry. Where are you at? Sorry.
Bicycling, okay, first sentence. Bicycling for both commuting and rec, remove of commuting. Walking over on the right hand. The last sentence, "Sidewalks should be incorporated into new developments located within growth areas as recommended in Chapter 8." Just so you understand, that only means 2 areas, village and neighborhood residential, and neighborhood residential is only in 711. So those are the only 2 areas, the transportation component of sidewalks that are in Chapter 8.
Can we just mix all that and say sidewalks should be incorporated into new developments where appropriate?
Yep.
I mean, that's just a little...
This, I mean, it sounds like it could be a lot more than it is.
What are we doing with bicycle for both commuting and recreational purposes? Because I agree, I haven't seen anybody commuting to work on a bicycle in Powhatan County.
We're taking out commuting.
Real quick, back on page 8, earlier, I think we had said that level of service C was our minimum acceptable, and here it says A through D is generally considered acceptable. I just want to make sure we...
We're, that's what I was brought up earlier. I mean, here it says D, so...
I would go with VDOT.
Yes.
Which is D.
Because they have gone to D.
So do you want to enter the projects?
The next thing I have is major thoroughfare.
All right, page 10. This is going to be a question for you. On your table down at the bottom, we're going to be getting to this also in another place. Are the projects from the Route 60 corridor study included in the table below?
The, of that, the preservation study, it was just...
The intersection, was those projects included in your table below?
Some of them are, right, but not every single one.
And remember, when you answered that question, Mrs. Carmack went back and got the others, the dollar figures, that we're not in that study, okay?
This is not, some of them are in here, but it's not fluxed at all.
I think all of them should be in there, that's my point. And the second thing is, I'm going to be requesting later on, the safety study that we did on Route 711, those things that were listed in that report that we could do, I would like them also be itemized in the thoroughfare plan when we get there. And my question is on this table, are those projects from the safety study included in your table here?
There currently no, but we will.
Okay. So if we can go ahead and update that, I'm fine.
Where were you going, Bill?
Page 11, the major thoroughfare plan. Let's look at the 2 dotted lines, 15 and 13. 15 comes from Staves Mill and goes in through the back of Holly Hill to come out. Why would we want to do that? It just potentially pumps more, more, more cars.
Is that shown on the list of projects?
Yeah, 15.
Okay, so, it's on page, it's, what page is that? I'm sorry, I've got to translate. It's what?
He means the description.
17, 317, of the herbivores.
Do you know any history on that, Brett?
I don't. Unlike the legislature, which we've actively been working on, this one, as far as I know, it's just been on here for some time, but we've never, never...
I don't know the ideology of it either, so...
Well, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
8.6 million is where I go when I look at, in Staves Mill Road, you know, that originally, and I don't know when this was done, 2010 or what, if this is the company and it goes back to that date, the Staves Mill Road was cut off, and then the new section of Staves Mill was put in, where the intersection comes down. And I was, I marked this, I wrote on it, and I was looking at it yesterday. There's no traffic to go, who do you move in terms of cars off of that Staves Mill Road that's going to go down to Holly Hills? And who from Holly Hills is going to go to Staves Mill Road?
On the backside.
Take, take her off.
My word was no when I looked at it.
That's a taker offer.
15 is now, for $8 million or for $2 million, break anybody's trail on that one.
Let's look at 13. Okay, 13 is, is our convenience center going to stop that or allow it?
We have a path for the, for the, don't get any more through there.
Do we, do we want it? That was my question, do we want it to go through? Yes. Okay, so it still makes sense. Okay, thanks.
You can carry from Loxton to Potter Gaff, south, please.
You'll go in, you'll go into our convenience center and be able to continue straight on over behind Loxton and north of the four lines.
Yep. So are you guys saying leave that in there?
That one will leave in, yeah.
Probably be a smart scale project. Kevin's driving on smart scale, it's full.
Without management. Right, yes, some contribution.
Okay.
Page 14.
I'd like to go to 12. Okay. Remember when we did the smart scale project for Route 711 and Juice Ferry intersection? Do we have that anymore?
I read that, because it was something that rounded out.
Well, no. Hold on, it was a roundabout, and then there was a, you know, turn lane with a passing lane.
And there was 2 options.
It's 2 options, and one was cheaper than the other, and the roundabout, problem we will have with the roundabout was the church, Mayor's Church. They would be losing a major part of the church property there, so...
I see on 13, you're going on Trail Juice Ferry Road, construct a roundabout and improve approaches on Route 711 from Bourbon Lane to St. Mary's Blatch.
Where are we going?
Which one is...
Page 13, it's the fourth line down.
Keep my trail Juice Ferry. 10 million.
Yep.
And so, in my opinion, the roundabout, Brett, do you recall what I'm talking about? Your longer conversation, so there was a A and a B, and given what discussion was, the cost was, the impact to the church, we submitted B, I believe.
Yes.
So I would like to see B as opposed to the roundabout, B and the minus.
We can update the description and the cost reflect that.
Okay.
Anderson Highway slash South Creek 1, reconfigure intersection. What are we doing with Starbucks? Is this a chance, is this, are we going to reconfigure the intersection because of Starbucks? We have, we have to have turn lanes.
What are we supposed to reconfigure? Because we have the double stack turn lanes going in there now.
So we're now changing the intersection.
Right.
Should we be doing this? Okay, that's my question. Is this, is this... Should we be doing this? Okay, that's my question. Is this, is this a more, which project you were, Anderson Highway, reconfiguring South Creek One?
Yeah, this is the one that Rebecca.
So now we're doing Starbucks, so now we're in this intersection. That's my, that's my question. Did we approve Starbucks? Starbucks has been approved. Okay, the, not the building, but the rezoning.
Rezoning.
Yes, I thought since the rezoning was already approved, there were no proper transportation improvements with that.
Well, they have to be, they have to be, they have to have full turn lanes there and out, do they not?
Yes.
So that would still work with this. This was, Rebecca, what she was talking about was reconfiguring it, so you don't have cross movements where it would be only, only turns out, so that, that would work.
So, should we take that off? I mean, if you need the full turn lane anyways, what are we reconfiguring? If it's not ever, you know what I mean, if Starbucks is coming in there.
She wanted a three lane.
Yeah, I think it was, this one would be, and this is why the price is much lower than the others, it's primarily restriping, signal timing, changing that, not much actual construction. Be restricting it so you don't have cross movement, say from Starbucks to South Creek, you wouldn't have a movement where you go straight across. You would just be turning out right or turning left, which would reduce the signal timing quite a bit. So it sounded from BDOT's explanation like a good project, low cost, but then extending turn lanes and things like that would impact this, maybe two.
But we have the fourth side of an intersection, okay? That's going to change BDOT's plans for this intersection. And I'd just like to make sure that what we're doing with the Starbucks project doesn't work against what we need to do long term.
Yeah, we discussed this with them in the Route 60 study. We showed them the rezoning, the traffic volumes, the plans for all that, and made sure that this will work together. So we can, I can bring that back up with Rebecca, but my recollection was we specifically made sure this would work with the full building.
Go ahead.
Bottom of that page, this is the Anderson Highway, Maiden Road, Emmanuel Church Road.
That is going to happen.
I mean, you asked.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be the goofiest thing I've seen in a long time. Yeah.
So let's, let's.
Go to reality. Let's go to reality of what could, yeah.
Well, it's interesting. If I had, if you looked at the configuration, and I'm coming from my house, which means I'm coming up Emmanuel Church Road, where I have to go to get to the Landmark Center, okay? I have to take a right turn, and I have to take a left turn, go all the way up to, to Maiden's, come all the way back down, okay? So what do we do with that? I mean, that.
We just took it off.
I would take it out.
Take it out.
Take it out.
We're better when we are.
Okay.
I agree with Paul. We're better off now. Much better off.
You asked.
What are the alternatives?
You asked for some alternative, and they made.
Her alternatives were kind of nebulous. I don't know if you read the, I mean, they were a little confusing, but we can go back and look at that again, Brett, to see if anyone would have been worthwhile putting in, because she was like, well, you know, anyway.
Page 14, I thought it was one. Right in the middle, long-term projects. We didn't take out, we took out all the widening payments and straightening other than the one on Pedro.
I've got both of them checked.
Okay.
Do we want to keep those ones?
It's the same thing we did with restaurant.
Are you taking all three of them out?
Do you think?
Taking the two-page roads out, yes.
Oh, me that the citizens on Pedro kind of are pretty feverish about that. Do you think we should keep that in there? Just.
Just follow what we did with everyone else, okay? We're not really going to be.
We didn't, we didn't have anything listed for where it just came from. It was widening all the roads in Palatine County.
And straight.
Well, that's when we had $41 billion.
Yeah.
Yes.
But there was never cost here. The cost assume, you know, full, full road construction widening. It's also possible, if those are areas that we want to see some improvement, we could look at things like trench widening.
Right.
Lower costs. So I would say, maybe don't pay as much attention to the cost as wouldn't want to do something there.
We're waiting to pay attention to the cost.
Well, that would be a trench widening project if they approved. I agree.
And I would agree that with Mr. Cox, I think we are elected to pay attention to the cost, but we're also elected to pay attention to the safety that happens on that road. That road is extremely unstable with the traffic flow that's there. And it's worthwhile to at least put it out where we can get another option.
I would agree.
That would be less expensive than this, to get to Mr. Cox's point of the money. But, you know, you start talking about people's safety, maybe the money should go to the side a little bit.
So could you add something about, like you said, general improvements?
Are you on crisis? You have to have a note, you have to, when you, okay?
Yeah.
The real cautionness is straightening it, okay? Quite frankly, I love our winding country roads. I think if, maybe if we straighten the straighten part more, more interested in the wide thing. It's really shoulder improvement.
Yeah.
And you shoulder for it, you could kind of do an estimate on 71.
I don't, I love those windy curvy roads too, back in 1975. It was nobody here. That's right. A little bit more.
Well, we took all the others out, so that's good.
Get the other motor connections to 21. The, one I have a question about is the SCAG road. Why would you? Somebody's walking to the freeway.
Actually, you'd be surprised, according to my mother.
Well, according to the Indians, they aren't.
So, well, according to my mom, she does have, you know, people that do walk to it. And you do have, but you do have the War Memorial down there. You have the ballfields down there. So you do have some opportunity for, I think, why, I would leave it in.
Well, see, the thing I don't like about it's dead end. I like it if it connects to other sidewalks. That's, that's the whole point.
To connect to existing sidewalks, yeah. It would connect to an existing one, according to that.
If you connect to, you connect to 13, but then it's.
When you get to Cheltenham, there's nothing there.
Yeah.
I get what you're saying.
In terms of, whether now or in the future. And so, those sidewalks are getting a lot of use for people not going to freeways, just walking around. They need to go somewhere.
I think that the.
So that's, that's the question.
I would leave it. I'm a good person. Leave it in, can't.
Okay, that's fine. Can we go back up to the, this is the point you said?
Yeah.
Okay, stay. Look at the first two, okay? Off-road trail and the sidewalks to the middle school. Do we need to do both of them?
What were you saying?
One is a trail from, from the same place over to Fighting Creek. The other's a sidewalk running from Michael Potter's and around. Do we need, do we need to do both of them? You know, in terms of, particularly in terms of money we're spending. She was spending money on something else. If you think we would, this is a question to you all. If you think we really need to do both of them, then I'm fine with that.
We also get a lot of grants for pedestrian improvements, and they want to see that they're in an actual plan. So you don't necessarily need to think about this as a council, I think. And we have actually requested, A, the trail before, and the reason it was rejected, which we now have it coming in and going, first reason it was rejected is it wasn't in a plan.
Okay, we'll keep it. All right.
Very good point. Grants will come into play. It's nice to have that in your, in your comprehensive plan at the state there. Thank you.
All right. I think that's it for transportation. Do you all have anything?
The only thing I have is left on implementation tool.
Okay. Do you all have anything?
Yeah, page 25. Action prioritization. We talked about the need to do a war school plan. Some of what we've got right now is dated, and it doesn't really contain the type of information that we need right now. So I would include that, Brett, unless you've got some other thoughts.
Yeah, we include that, and then we also talked about a larger, more comprehensive plan for trail number sidewalks, so we'll piece them together, so we can.
So we've got two things, right? And we're adding in under topical and strategic plans? Is that what they want?
Or topic.
Yes, topic. That's proper place.
Capital improvement, planning.
The water and sewer might be under, you don't want it, or whenever you.
I'm sure, Brett, under fiscal impact analysis, short-term, identify the feasibility of impact fees. You may weigh in on this one. Please do an impact fees on Virginia today.
I'm doing it. Actually, we reached out to Baker to ask a couple months ago. I don't remember if we got her five albums, anybody, you know, even working on it right now.
Because I remember 100 years ago, when this whole thing about access management was coming to the fore, and, you know, BDOT was running out of money, and there was no money for new construction because everything was going to be used for maintenance, which is required under the code of Virginia. The only people that I knew that did impact fees, I think it was Stafford County. But I don't, I don't know if they're even doing it now, but.
I'm not aware of anybody. Again, I'll check that with Baker, because I know they track that. Every year, they send out a survey to see if anybody's even.
I don't want to have something out. If you would, I'd like to put that on hold until you can get more information, because if we've got something in, says we're going to do something short-term, you know, with impact fees, and we're really not doing it, we don't really want to be doing it, going forward, then it shouldn't be in here.
Yeah, and there was the new legislation with the transportation impact fee specifically as well. Mr. Lash needed to kind of put together a summary for us on that, so we'll look at those.
It also says a midterm implement. Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying. So I want to know if we're going to really do that.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Brett, impact fees on what?
So it's not intended, those can be, you would have to adopt an ordinance to say what you want them for, but unlike proffers, which can only be imposed on a rezoning, impact fees could be for any new development, you know, single-family home, commercial, you know, whatever, any new development. Not necessarily stuff that's coming for the war that could be, you know, a vibrant new construction. So it's quite raw.
Yeah, actually, it would be better than a proffer in many ways.
Well, it was generated by the restrictions on proffers that came out as another way of replenishing those funds.
Yeah, I think our, was a big.
Mr. Williams' point of view, I don't think could ever pass muster.
Chapter 11?
Chapter 11, page 27. Using subdivision and zoning ordinance as implementation tools, you have the history, and I would suggest that at the bottom, we need one more dot. We need a 2021 update to support the changes in the future land use plan. Say that again. Okay, this goes through the history, okay? And so at the bottom, you need another dot, okay?
Seeing what we just did.
Yeah, we need, we need a 2021 update to support the changes in the future land use plan.
I think everybody's telling you we're applying another update.
This is about this.
We have one coming as a result of what we're doing.
This is about the zoning ordinance at the subdivision ordinances, which we've not planned any substantial, like, we've done small ordinance maintenance, but all of these updates are about making changes to the zoning ordinance on the company.
Correct. It probably would be 2022.
So it would be kind of weird to put something earlier than.
Whatever day, okay, we, yeah, in terms, in terms of our action prioritization, I think it says one year.
Well, in one year?
One year.
But I just, right now, I would be just speculating.
If you want to call it, if you want to call it, if you want to call it 2022, that's fine, but we've got another one coming, and it's a big one. Okay?
Yeah, I just don't, if I, I just don't know.
You can't put in the car before the horses, which is.
Like, I mean, it's up to you guys. Probably put something that.
I don't, I don't think it's a big deal, one way or the other.
People understand.
You know. Okay, anything else on the implementation tools? That being said, we're wrapped up. We'll have the second public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your name and address for the record.
I think we're clear on that.
Back up, okay.
Mr. Walton, please join us. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for letting me join in here. Adam Mormon with Walton. This is regards to parcel 4279.
Adam, can you give your address, please?
My address is Myersville, Maryland.
Oh.
The location of our parcel is parcel 42-79, 74 acres on the east side of Palatine County. Wanted to check in here. The, has the county, the general comments, obviously you're not going to answer, has the county performed any fiscal impact analysis of the proposed 2021 comp plan, and what those changes will be from the 2019 comp plan? And maybe a better question is, did, did the county perform a fiscal impact analysis from the 2019 comp plan, and those changes from 2010? It also seems like some of these action prioritization items that you're, you're going to implement should be done prior to approving a comp plan, not after the fact. You know, the comp plan's really a guiding document. I think I heard that from, from one of you earlier. It's not a zoning document. It should be, you know, not, not used for regulatory, you know, regulations and taking of the land per se, and changing of property rights. You know, I, I'm not clear how proposing all industrial and commercial on the east side of 60 is really encouraging real economic opportunities for the existing citizens in Palatine. I'd have to understand a little bit more of that. You know, how are you accommodating the growth of your existing businesses in the county if you're not growing to support that? Every new business is taking away opportunities from the existing businesses. So again, th- those are some things that should be considered with these comp plans. You know, how are the existing youth supposed to stay in the county if there aren't a varied type of products and variety of residential homes that they could move into? Affordability is certainly a significant issue. I'd like to keep, if it was me, my citizens in the county and not have to move out to where they can afford to move. And, you know, one, one of the other things is, is starting for me, is that the changes here are just, you know, about two years removed from a 2019 comp plan that had several years of work that went into it. You know, 2019 comp plan was recommended by the Planning Commission to have a mix of Village Center on our property, and, you know, a year and a half later, the supervisors changed it to economic opportunity. Here we are two years again, you know, later. Planning Commission recommended to keep economic opportunity, and all of a sudden now we see a potential change to industrial. You know, I don't know what everybody's backgrounds are on the board of supervisors. I just hope that the Planning Commission's recommendations and county staff's recommendations over the last five years go into some of these decisions. And even just interviewing. And even just interviewing, you know, various stakeholders that own property of, of what the thoughts are. There's just a whole lot of change occurring again. And, and I don't know that there's as much input provided here with, you know, the whole situation of virtual meetings and, and, you know, not, everyone not necessarily getting out in, into, you know, the, the public realm per se. But I do, do thank you for your time today and, and hope to get some additional time to talk with folks later on before this is implemented. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public comment period. Before we wrap up, do you want to get a timeline of what we want to do to proceed going forward? I know, I think we want one more to kind of go over everything and do one last look. Um, I think unfortunately I chatted with Brett about doing it next week and I don't think that's feasible, so.
Turn around all, all the chapters changes and put the clean document in, give you enough time to review that. But I think we could get it fully put together and out to you in the middle, late in this week. And if you're looking at like the September 22nd workshop, that would give you, you know, over a week to, to review the changes we've talked about at this point.
When is our joint?
The 23rd.
The regular meeting is the 27th.
No, you see, we can't, that ain't going to work well at all. Going through this entire thing is going to take some time and getting ready for the joint meeting on the 23rd is going to take some time too.
All right, let's see. So if we do. We could do, we have our regular meeting the 27th. We could do the review the 29th. That'll go best close to two weeks to review it.
Just, I just don't want to stack it on top of the joint meeting.
Yeah.
That's all.
So we'll do the 29th and then, um. We have to have, what are your thoughts? What do you, staff, everybody, we, we obviously have to take it to the public, you know?
We, we, we also got to have a vote on it.
And we have to have a vote on it. Exactly. So. We usually get the public input, then we vote, correct? Yeah. Yeah, we get the public input, then we do the final vote.
What we would be looking for at the next workshop is just kind of a non-competent type vote that we're ready to maybe enough changes were ready for us to take it to the public, not, not voting, correct, adopted, but it's, it's good enough, let's get it to the public.
Okay, so how many meetings are you thinking for the public?
Well, it really depends on what you want to do. The Planning Commission. The timeframe they use effectively took the position that we're not going to spend any time with the public. They didn't. Last time around. Sparmack, you spent personally an enormous amount of time trying to generate some interest in the county. I don't, so that, those are the two extremes.
Right.
Okay. I would.
I'd like to set the public dates now so we can start advertising it of the, of the community meetings.
I'd like to see where we are on the 29th. I don't know that we'll have something that's right. I don't, I don't know that we'll have.
Well, excuse me, Mr. Matta Chair.
Yes, sir.
If we have our meeting on the 29th. It doesn't prevent us from tentatively setting up advertising for our open houses for the public.
Exactly.
And what we're trying to do is save a little space there. And if we get it done, we're done. If we don't, then we're, we're okay. But if we start it now, if we make some decisions now on the date, we can at least get with the newspaper and have that set up.
And we'll still be having dialogue even with the public input. So we can set the dates up.
Okay, so how many, what do you envision the public, okay?
I think in two, two's plenty. We've done them or we've done three or even one. I mean, what, what do you guys say?
Like an, like an open house date?
Yes.
Meeting? We are, last time we did.
Question, how many open houses? Two, two, two in the past.
Yeah, maybe.
Two, two.
I don't know.
Big two.
Yeah.
One, one in each and one in.
Yeah, we did usually at the fire station.
Yep.
This is in my first row.
We could do the library.
Library, exactly.
Industry standard, it seems like.
Yes. So we'll do that and then. So we bump into October. Whatever you guys, what does staff think that they could arrange? Or do you want us to plan it and let us know the dates? Does that work for you guys?
See what's available.
Yeah, see what's available and, you know, okay, let's do that.
Shooting for like middle of October.
Early, yeah.
Yeah.
I think you want to have one on Halloween.
Halloween's on the sun.
Okay, yeah, if you could do that, Brett, also that would be awesome. That way we can kind of get those on the books. Okay, uh, anything else? County administrator comments?
No comments.
Board comments? No.
I have a comment.
Okay.
These are pretty exciting times here in the region for transportation. Recently, at our last meeting of the regional transportation planning organization, we agreed to come forward with developing a plan to butter a share with the public of what we do is planning entities for transportation across three organizations. Plan RBA, regional transportation planning organization. And of course, the newly created Central Virginia Transportation Authority. What we agreed was using consultants, you know, that are already a resource to Plan RBA, that we would be coming forward with a plan again to get it to the public, what we are doing for transportation in Central Virginia. So that's pretty exciting to see these three organizations coming together and communicating and providing the background such that people in the region can understand how we work together to solve transportation issues here in Central Virginia. So we're pretty excited about that. At the Central Virginia Transportation Authority, we have done an RFE for a financial advisor. And what that means is we will have somebody coming in and assisting us with the leveraging of their revenues that are coming in as a result of the creation of this authority. And be able to address things like, you know, we're proposing to do with the fall line trail. Which will be a major asset to us in Central Virginia. It's going to be a project that's going to, you know, be for two years and all about royalty. And even though we are not technically one of the counties that fall within the fall line project, we will still be benefiting from what is being proposed right now. And I'm not going to get into all the details of that. But there are things in the works where even though we are directly in the fall line, we will be able to see a monetary benefit back to us here in the county. So again, it's some pretty exciting stuff that's going on right now.
Any other board accounts? Any?